So this has been a tricky issue, one that I think council has spent many, many hours listening to all parties involved, including the developer, land architects, our residents, activists, our solicitor, our engineer, our planning commission. And I myself have thought long and hard on this issue and admit to feeling very overwhelmed at times. I believe as council, we should take more time to look at the impacts of Stormwater this project and how we can preserve more green space. I would like to look at more creative ways, whether that's building smaller homes, maybe building more less homes. I think that we can be more creative. With that said, I will be voting against the approval of this plan tonight. I would also like to say one thing, one more thing. I am super proud to live in a town full of residents who are passionate, engaged, and fearless, packed Zoom sessions and, you know, community rooms that are full like this is a sign of a healthy community who cares deeply about the town. With that said, I've also been discouraged by the division that this issue has caused. I am a believer in assuming good intentions, and as we all know, there will always be times where we won't see eye to eye on what is best for our town. So although some of you may disagree, I sit up here amongst hardworking, patient, thoughtful group of humans. We're both elected officials and residents, just like all of you. We've grown up in this town, we've raised our kids in this town, we care just as much about this town as you do. And I hope that even though we may not get all the outcomes we wish for tonight, that we can get back to a place of appreciation and respect. So with that, Sarah?
Oh.
Peter?
Well, because it's an important vote, I thought I'd just describe some of the reasons why I often vote the way I do tonight. I think that the borough engineers made a good case in describing the issues that remain for this plan to be largely ones that I'll call details. You might not like that now, but they are essentially details. The principal outcome that has been resolved by this public process is a four lot subdivision on this property. It's really a matter of our really excellent consultants and staff making sure that all the conditions that have arisen during this public process get addressed properly and they have all the leverage to make sure that's done correctly. Another thing I'd like to point out is during the public comment, it was pointed out that the developer offered to sell the borough the property so that we could make it a park. It was kind of him to do that, I suppose, but recognize that the number offered to the borough was the price that the developer paid plus the money he would make doing his normal business of developing that property, i.e. the profit. All the risk, sweat, and toil that goes into a development, he would be happy to avoid and simply take the money and have the borough develop it as a park. Think about that for a minute. Who's paying the extra money? Every single one of you and all of us to develop a park two blocks away from a brand-new park that was purchased and developed under a comprehensive plan recommendation that said we should ought to develop a park in the northwest quadrant of the borough. We did it. This came up. It was expensive. There was a brand-new park right nearby. And if we look for a minute at a larger scale and we think about trees and forests and our ability to access them, depending on how you view it, it's either five or six blocks away is Glen Providence Park, a far larger, far more viable forest that deserves every bit of protection and love that the friends of Glen Providence Park have provided. Take a few more, hundreds of yards of a walk across Ridley Creek Road, and you're in the Lewis Gutt Park, Lewis Gutt Park of Upper Providence and across the creek Mineral Hill Park, literally 100 acres of woods, a stone's throw from Glen Providence Park. Like others have said here, we have to make difficult decisions of your balancing a lot of different things. So you can see some of the rationale I used to make the decision I'm about to make. Thank you very much. Sarah?
What I'm saying has nothing to do with, I've already said to people that I see having a park is fine, but I don't see anything wrong with having the developer do four houses. The only thing I want to say is I looked out and I said, "Not again." I mean, where are the people of color for this town that I've been in for 45 years? And thank you for being passionate, but where are they? Okay. I know it doesn't.
I'm not going to repeat the comments of many of my fellow members of council. I agree with many of them. I'll offer justice. There has been comment that somehow this has been a fast-tracked process. I disagree with that entirely. Keep these thoughts in mind. Under state law, not borough law, under state law, we have 90 days to approve a preliminary plan, three months. Under state law, we have 90 days to approve a final plan, another three months, six months. This project was filed, the application was filed in December, this past December. It's been six months. It's not been fast-tracked. This has received all of the attention, actually more attention than any other project that I'm aware of over the past 10-plus years.
I know. I see. Sorry.
And I don't say that out of exasperation. I don't say that to begrudge the time we spent. I appreciate the passion, but it has not been the case that we have looked away from this project. It's not the case that we have given it attention. We have given it full attention for a half a year, the exact amount of time that state law says that we have to approve a preliminary final plan. So I'll for that as comment.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Okay. I want to call the motions. All those in favor of authorizing Resolution Number 2021-35 for the preliminary final land development application for 115 West Sixth Green, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion, the yeses, five to ten.
All right. Item number three on my agenda. This is, this is 2021-36, go figure, current field of 35. This is a preliminary land development application along Glen Providence Road. This is something we've talked about at several, like, several different meetings. This is a plot of land that sits across the street of the Quaker Reading House. It sits in historic district. It has received the certificate of appropriateness necessary for this project through four. It's essentially a subdivision of a property that is seven housing units. We have another resolution prepared for this. It has to be even ended this evening. I'll read the conditions, or at least some of the conditions, some of them are familiar to participants, I believe. The developer is to comply with the recommendation of, the recommendation of review letter of our engineer that letter is dated May 27, 2020. Developers of instructed residences of the property substantial in conformance with the architectural renderings of twins and carriage houses dated October 28, 2020, revised December 21, 2020. And those images will be attached to the resolution. Developers shall create a homeowner's association for purposes of managing the stormwater management facility that will serve the development. Developers shall draft and refer the declaration of easements setting forth rights of access and maintenance obligations for the common property. Developers shall submit home association documents for the declaration of easements to the borough solicitor to deliver to the neighborhood and approval. Developers shall directly install a physical barrier between lots three and four to prevent vehicle traffic between such lots. Developers shall institute and deliver to the borough a perpetual maintenance agreement related to the stormwater management facilities on the property as required in accordance with the borough's stormwater coordinates. Maintenance agreement shall be reported against the property. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer obtaining surmoting approval. That is standard. Approval of the plan is conditioned upon developer obtaining consent from Motto America in Washington. That is standard. There is a provision for financial security, which is standard. There is a provision for the timing of the, within which the plan is to be recorded. That is standard. The proposed development shall be completed in accordance with the contents of the plan, notes on the plan, this approval resolution, and the land development agreement. Loss of accomplishing satisfying being all these terms, of course, expressed with the developer. The developer shall notify the borough through appropriate officials 72 hours prior to the commencement of any graded ground clearing. That again is a standard condition. The borough shall not sign the plan until the developer shall have paid to the borough all the fees, outstanding professional review fees, et cetera. Again, is standard condition. There also is language here about the time in which the developer has in order to appeal the motion that I, or should this motion be, should be approved, they have 30 days in which to file an appeal. There is one waiver requested, and the waiver is with regard to what is depicted on the plan, the code requires 100 feet, and as is a fairly usual request, the developer is requesting that, that, that what is depicted is within 10 feet of the property lots. That is something that is often requested and almost reformally granted. So I make it in the form of motion that we approve Resolution 2021-36, which will approve preliminary land development application and 100 on Glen Providence Road.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Yeah, that is probably a softball. I hope it is. You know, preliminary slash final, this was a preliminary. What was the, what were the reasons that this is preliminary versus preliminary slash final?
I think that that rests with the developer in the one, the developer handed an application that was for preliminary and final, and it was processed in that fashion, and it was reviewed in that fashion. This was applied as preliminary only and was processed in that fashion and reviewed in that fashion. So the key is the, what, how the developer applied initially. You might recall that there was, helping with this, we just recently, I recently passed the preliminary plan, and the request was made by the developer to convert that to preliminary final. And the borough said no, it was filed as preliminary, the treaty was as preliminary, and we did not grant that request. So the process is triggered, the process that we use is triggered by the nature of the application.
And the application for preliminary slash final is just that, an application is up to you all to decide whether to accept it that way and process it that way, right?
That's right.
Okay. You could decide to say no, you have to do it as preliminary. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those who think in over two with Resolution Number 2021-36, the preliminary land development application at 100 Glen Providence Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, those please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Last item on my agenda concerns amendment to amusement device coordinates that we have had our votes for going on, I think, more than half a century. And it looks and it feels, the amendment here essentially permits an arcade in the ROA district along State Street. And this was an amendment that was prompted by really treating a proposal from residents of other Providence who would like to have a place for middle-school age, high school age kids to go, as opposed to hanging out at Burrell Field and playing basketball at night, and that's how I know that. But it would be nice if there was a place in the borough for them to go, they are welcome, or there's something of interest for them to do. And this amendment will help move along that proposal. So I move that we approve the amendment to amusement device coordinates, it's number one of 150 of 2021. And we have, the folks who are behind all this, it's, it's, they're prompting, their idea, their initiative. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening, but I make it in the form of motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
And who are the folks concerned?
It may be a great issue, it's case.
Okay. All those who think approving amendment to amusement device coordinates, number 1150, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
That completes my report.
Any questions for President Hall?
I think so.
Okay.
Sarah, there's nothing yet. All right, then we move along to recreational board of health, Councilwoman Kevin Lawyer.
But you have an announcement relating to the board of health. As you may know, Delaware County, UCF is one of the only counties its size that doesn't have a board of health, doesn't have a county board, and that's going to change come January. So we got a call, we got a day, Brittany and myself, along with some other folks in the NDA, to talk about what's going to happen. So come January, I think it's going to change, and that being necessitate the county to read residential inspections instead of the borough. So one of the things that Lori advised us is if she doesn't want to allow it, that we may need a contractor to help inspector, so her.
You may need to add in here.
We may need to hire someone to replace Lori. Now, the county will do all the inspections, rest of inspections, but she advised having to have a contractor to do things locally. And again, this is all going to be, as of January, the county's going to open their own health board, so we will have to do some things differently at that point. But there's a lot of areas that we're, that we're going to work very rapidly, and there's still some uncertainty about that. But that's where we're going with the word of. As far as records, we heard from Mayor McMahon, he will on Saturday be honoring Donald Trustee by formally dedicating the top lot to Donald. Things are going to be moved up a little bit, we're going to be doing it at 10:45 to accommodate maybe his schedule, so 10:45, we'll be gathering at the top lot, and we will welcome Donald to dedicate the top lot to him. Hopefully it's a nice day to just all four play at the top after, after we do that stuff, even stuff, this Saturday. Upcoming regulations, we are going to do July 4th, on Sunday, on Sunday the 4th, seven Monday, so we tend to do. We're scaling things back a bit, but we will be doing games and bike-creasing contests with prizes, so hopefully realize old-fashioned, we'll be July 4th, that is, we tend to do on the, on that Sunday. Our first movie is scheduled for Saturday, July 17. Cruise New Age, that will be at Burrell Field, easily distance of that, we're already opening things up with records, so that will be our first movie. There's another one technically scheduled for July 17, and I believe the last one is sometime in September, Monday, Saturday. And finally, we are going to go back to doing Spirit of Philadelphia this year, that will be on Saturday, September the 18th, and tickets will be $50, I can put the bus, and the cruise with lunch, that's an afternoon cruise, and more details will be found in the first video. And I believe that concludes my report.
We didn't do it this year.
Because of the logistics of the outdoor, the ticket is, we obviously did. It was nice, it was a little bit hot. Yeah, it was nice how we did it.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Councilman Lawyer at this time? See, if there are none, we'll ask them.
Jimi Hendrix.
Yeah. For that oral distraction, let me go and do the most prosaic and most reportable part of my agenda, which is ratification of payment of bills for May. In May, we drew from the general fund 292,124.63. From the recreation fund, 905.33. And from the capital fund, 31,603.46. I move a ratification, excuse me, of the May's bills.
Second.
Both been made and seconded twice, so we're well on the way. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving ratification of payment of the borough's bills for this past month from the general fund, recreation fund, and capital fund in the amounts as specified by Councilman Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now before I turn to the other relatively minor action items, I want to report a couple other things, mostly the actions, not actions, but the discussions of the financials committee last Tuesday. We had a presentation by our auditor, who has a draft audit for last year. It's good, it's good. No material weaknesses, no significant findings. It follows a pattern of improving audit reports year in and year out over the past couple years. There are some recommendations for some procedural improvements, mostly around journal entries and capital depreciation, but they didn't rise to the level of a significant findings. It's a very good report, and we'll soon have the final report, I think, within a month or two. On the financials for the month of May, really for the year, it's been a story of, I think, cautious optimism. Our earned income taxes are strong, they're running about 7% ahead of where we might expect them to be at this time of year. Our overall revenue is running about 5% above what we expect, and our expenses are quite low at only 28%. So that kind of swing produces a surplus, apparent surplus in our budget of almost $2 million as of today. We all know that that changes over the course of time, and there's too many good bills we'll have to pay later on in the year. But it appears that all the work we did last year in trying to carve this budget out of a very unknown situation is paying off. But I do want to remind all our borough council folks that we did spend a million dollars of our savings account last year to balance the books. So this year's good, and let's not forget last year. Okay. Another thing that happened in the finance committee is we had a fascinating presentation from a professional at the Department of Community and Economic Development, who talked to us about the various forms allowed voter referendum in Pennsylvania regarding three particular services, fire, library, and open space acquisition. It was interesting. What we learned from fire is that there's truly no need for a special village referendum. In fact, the law says that you can impose up to three mils of real estate tax for fire services. Well, right now, our millage is only 1.4 something. So obviously, we're well within our statutory ability to establish a special village for the fire department if we so choose to. Or we could take it to the voters if we chose to. For the library, to establish a special village for the library requires voter approval. You can't do it as a simple ordinance, you have to go to the voters to get it approved. Open space, now in both cases, we're talking about special village for fire and library, that's real estate taxes. For open space taxes, the Pennsylvania laws are a little bit more flexible in that you could use that or you could use earned income tax. In fact, we have, even when we have a 1% earned income tax, maybe you could go above it if we wanted to pose a special tax for open space acquisition and maintenance. Or we could ask our citizens to simply prove a certain amount of debt for a certain time period if we wanted to. That's all. Or, because we are vastly underneath our debt ceiling as a municipality, in other words, we could borrow tens of millions of dollars more than we owe now. We could, quite frankly, do this all ourselves by our ordinance if we chose to, if we wanted to establish special funds. We learned all those things from DCED, but I'm just introducing it to you now, certainly something we should start to talk about seriously, because if we wanted to put any kind of voter referendum to our voters for the fall election, we would have to file that to the board of elections by sometime in mid-August, so early August. So we essentially only have next month around that means to do that. We want, if we want to wait till a primary in May next year, we'd have a lot more time. Okay. Bear with me, the library is reawakening. I do want to mention a few things. There's a raffle going on on the 26th of June, something new they're trying. You can buy raffle tickets online, please do so, it's a fundraiser. And they're also having a pop-up sale on the porch that day from 10 to two CDs and DVDs. They find they're overwhelmed with CDs and DVDs. I'm going to be there. There's a raffle that will be held on the 26th, but you can buy tickets now and that day, you can buy tickets online, go to the library website for the raffle, or you could go that day and buy.
Peter, is it the 26th of June?
June.
That's next week.
That's next week.
That one's coming up.
Yep, that's next Saturday. And they, as I've reminded everybody before, they are taking donations for the book sale. You just have to drop off during business hours, and they plan to have a fall book sale. One last thing, the library spent some money expanding their e-books collection. They heard during the pandemic that people loved the e-books, but they had, they were tired of the long wait lists, so they now have over 4,000 titles, and the wait list should be a lot shorter. So please, go to the library for e-book, e-books. Okay, action on it. First thing is a very simple thing, really. We no longer have our coin box services offered to us from a bank, so we have to have a separate contractor. It turns out that this person is well-known for these coin box services, and I move approval of this contract. Any details, please ask our borough manager.
Ratification.
Ratification of the contract, excuse me for my speaking.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion upon the motion?
It's a shame that a bank won't take coin.
Yeah, it's legal tender after.
And you can, one of these one, the company.
Nobody.
Okay, well, we can bemoan that, or we could pass the motion.
On our favor.
Another marker in the decline of Western civilization, I suppose. Hearing no call for question, all those in favor of ratifying the contract with NF Sting and Sons for coin box services, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number three essentially related to contractual details of the federal relief package that we are being offered, and we have to allow the staff the leeway to sign and do all the documents. So I suggest we ratify the, I would say we've already done it, that's why we're ratifying it, the funding contract agreement for local stimulus funds. I mentioned that to you at the workshop, and they had to go ahead and do it because of the timing. So I move ratification.
Okay.
Motion made, has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Just to blow out, Ms. Gordon, that was an error of DCED, that there wasn't a five-day window, and DCED had to apologize. So if you did it in five days, thumbs up, but about dating. But about day before they came out and said, oops.
Did you do it?
We did.
Well done. Okay.
Well, we have to, we have to take it. All those in favor of ratifying the D R P A funding contract agreement for local stimulus funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
I move for simply, if you're, I'm good now, right? Don't worry, we already did this, but occasionally our phenomenal solicitors does make some money or here. Maybe forgot to advertise it, so we're going to have to do it again. So it's the same ordinance, same increase, it's just a month later, and we're doing it with all our, uh, everything crossed, periods, man.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving ordinance number one-one-four-nine of twenty-twenty-one concerning parking year increases to a dollar an hour and a flat rate parking fine of twenty-five dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Last action item is a minor change order for the park of, uh, the Bremel. Over the course of the project, uh, you know, there's a, uh, change orders accumulate. There's two basically types of change orders I've been seeking your approval for, for about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, two of them are for some changes to the types of stone used on the walls. That added, and steps added about four thousand dollars. And the second was a, um, change from Public Works installing a fence along one property by instead the contractor doing it, which certainly releases Public Works from an additional demand on their time and also gives us some warranty protection on the fence, so that added eight thousand dollars. Uh, note that the, uh, roughly three hundred and eighty thousand dollar contract total with the changes, all the change orders, is still about a hundred thousand dollars less than the second highest bid we've got for this park. So I, um, move approval for change order number two.
Motion has been made. Is there a second on motion?
Second.
Has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of approving the change order number two for the fifth Bremel contract meeting as outlined by Councilman Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Anything else? Um, are there any questions for Councilman Williamson at this time? If just an observation, uh, Peter, it is the case that the increase in, our parking year increase brings us in parity with our peer communities, is it not?
Oh, yes, it does. I mean, um, that's part of the reason. It's, it's, um, mostly because it costs us a lot, actually, to, to maintain our streets and, and it costs all our citizens. So we're just trying to share the cost with others. And, uh, we were consuming about twenty-five percent of our parking fees just in the administration. So we're trying to make a little bit more for paving and staffing and everything else.
Thank you for, uh, why are we here today? Now, we have, uh, Councilman, that's serious. Always lasting, never ending personal obligations in protocol, sir.
Okay, um, let's see. That's two action items. Um, one is the personal committee has submitted Dave Chaconi um, to get a fifteen-dollar hourly rate and increases duties. He's going to be doing much more. Um, and his title will be facilities maintenance worker one. And work not, no more than twenty-nine hours per week. And that is a messy, but a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Quite fine. Uh, motion been made and has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion, all those in favor of, uh, adjusting Dave Chaconi's rate of pay to fifty dollars an hour, increases duties in the position of part-time facilities maintenance worker one. It just rolls off the tongue, doesn't it? Um, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And recommending that the, uh, the personal committee did this again, uh, that we increased borough accountants' pay by fifty cents an hour.
That's in form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any discussion concerning motions? Hearing no call for, for discussion, all those in favor of adjusting the borough accountants' pay uh, by a fifty cent per hour increase for a plus nuisance or misery duties, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, so there's a couple of things, uh, in the PR. One of them is in the S C S newsletter and on their line and everything else, it says Media Fellowship House Market is where you can use your, um, photos. But it mentions Justin Donaldson Sundays, ten a.m. to one p.m. Nathan's shower, Saturday, Nathan?
Shower, yeah.
Okay, Sundays, ten a.m. to one p.m. Jack Nakum, I can't pronounce his last name.
These are the vendors.
These are the vendors at the Media Fellowship House Market. They are listed as. Well, it's from the Senior Community Services.
Oh, okay, yeah.
From their letter, plus they put it online, and I was therefore learning. Okay, Monday, we could go, more than we could go now, right? It's Monday, June seventh. I just happened to be reading the Daily Times sports section, and lo and behold, Helmand Dollar leading Springfield past Nor, Norberg. It's actually two people, but we don't know the other person at all. And, uh, so it says here Mitch Helmandollar provided the big blows in the seven-run second inning overs that powered the Springfield Colonials to eleven-to-one victory over Norberg. And you know who he is, right?
We do, if our residents may not.
Oh, um.
He's a voice office.
Yes, he's one of our, yes, thank you very much for saying that, man.
So he's not rounding up the bad guys?
Well, it was, um.
Got a big bat, rose fast.
Okay, and, um, and then the other thing, besides us having, I mentioned at workshop about, uh, Whitaker giving his, his, what he was allowed to say, um, the winnings from.
Jeopardy.
Jeopardy, that for two weeks, and so Media Fellowship House got almost three hundred thousand, right?
Four.
Yeah. Bill Whitaker, yeah. And so for those of you who don't know, uh, Bill is also a CBS sixty minutes. His family, Anita is, well, she's a member of my church. That's his sister, one of his sisters, and it will. He's still a little guy who's got him. He owns his sister also, Anita's sister, yeah. And his mother is the reason why, it's one of the reasons why we have Media Fellowship House. Um, and I did this, I guess the rest of you already did, but I got it today, and this is W H Y Y. And the, you did a good job there, Mr. President. Um, and, uh, you saw sort of what, two sides at least of the issue that we were discussing earlier. I thought it was very well done, but it's also ended up saying, you know, media is still everybody's hometown. And, uh, uh, it's still a good PR for Media. That's it. Thank you all my information.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Dixon at this time?
How do I turn it on?
Here, back here.
And then I don't know if this is for, for you, Sarah, or if it's for, uh, Brittany, but wasn't the borough just honored as one of the best places in America to retire?
Oh, yes.
Not just, just nation of all of the nation, not the, is that right, or it might be?
No, that's not, no.
Not just the region, but the entire nation.
With Beverly Hills and a couple others.
What was it?
Beverly Hills was also in the top six.
I heard.
Yeah, the Rodeo State Street, Rodeo.
Rodeo Street.
Another long list of accolades that Borough has been awarded over the past, the period. All right, well, now we have time for public economic privilege of the floor, so anybody who wishes to address council, please come forward, tell us your name, where you live, what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Aaron Simmons. I'm too close to the microphone. Three oh nine Maska Square. I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Peter said about the library pop-up sale. Also, I have been bidding CDs, a few lines, and board games. And also the ticket for raffle tickets we got sale at the Farmers Market on Sunday.
Did you see finals?
Yes, there's, there's some lines. Eric gets two dollars.
Wow.
No guarantees.
So what are you raffling off?
Oh, we're, they're raffling off gift cards from three-twenty, a barbecue from, what's the Aston Partner Store?
Snyder's Aces.
Snyder's Aces, they're doing, um, Trader Joe's is doing some stuff, Lollapop's doing stuff.
Okay, I can get you.
Deals is doing some stuff.
Peach Tins and J's. Alexis or something.
Thank you, Ron. Guess there are tickets.
Terry Runzey, three forty-two West Fourth Street. Um, tough loss tonight for Keaton Green. Uh, I'm kind of used to losing, you know, like home Philadelphia seventy-sixers. But, um, you know, I, I want to thank Councilwoman Amy Johnson, Councilwoman Lisa Johnson. Made a lot of green hearts proud and happy tonight with the no vote, and they had different reasons, but it, it was appreciated and noted that, um, you know, there were two votes in our council. I, I do have to address the freedom that Keaton Green never called for the Centennial Woods being a park. We called for it being a nature preserve, to just let it be and do the hard work of green infrastructure, cleaning our air, cleaning our water, serving as a natural air conditioning and cooling for our town, so. Uh, and we're well aware of Glen Providence Park since we've been the ones leading the battle to stop the borough from building a high hazard dam that would destroy the northeast section of that park and in the case of dam failure could wipe out the entire creek valley in the park. So we do know the value of Glen Providence Park, but the main point is we never called for it to be a park. And maybe you didn't understand that, but also we presented a financing plan where the taxpayers at Media would have paid very little, if anything at all. And I know you're aware of that too, because we sent you that proposal. Um, so, you know, since the Europeans landed in this nation, there's been decisions like these being made in rooms and usually by men, actually. Uh, and the Lenape shook their heads then, and they're still shaking their heads at the decisions that are getting made. And, uh, but moving, looking forward, uh, Keaton Green would definitely support a referendum where the voters of Media say we, we do want to pay more, um, so we can have an open space fund. Right now, zero dollars are dedicated to acquisition of green space. We'd like to come together now that this battle's been resolved. You know, we are going to document the destruction of those woods so that our town doesn't turn its head, um, in video and, and photographs. People are going to know what it means to make these decisions. But we wanted to come together with council. How can we create a fund so that in the future we can work together to preserve what is now going to be one less acre of the green space that the Open Space Consultant has identified? Um, there's the Bremel's Lake Country Club. Developers have their eye on that. We know about the Strontrak, which is already, um, has a legal agreement to build twenty-three-year unit apartment complex, but the owners have expressed interest in, in doing a deal. So there's, there's one less acre maybe that's going to be saved, but there's twenty-twenty-two that we can save by working together. And, um, we need to have dedicated funding for green space acquisition. You know, we didn't get it ten years ago, and that's something I think that is lost. We didn't do it five years ago. We didn't do it a year ago, but we can do it now. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that's from?
I also want to thank Amy and Lisa. I thought you gave really strong articulate statements. And to, and to Paul's point about, you know, voting from the heart, I, I think your statements and your votes were heartfelt, but they were based in an irrational analysis of the situation, and I appreciate your independence. And though, um, the outcome is extremely disappointing, uh, and it is painful to witness, uh, the relentless destruction of the natural environment just acre by acre, just eating away at the edges. I do know after thirty-seven years of activism that it, change takes longer than we would like it to take. Um, and for, for people who have my disposition, which is to look at things not like, well, it could be a lot worse. Um, I tend to think things like, I can imagine it so much better. Um, that's, that's hard, but what gives me hope in this moment to cling to something, um, although Terry did, did express some hope that we could work together in the future for establishing a green space fund, and I, I heartily agree with that, but on a more philosophic basis, what gives me hope is that I know that if you want to change the way things, you know, have always been done, um, that starts usually with dissenting voices saying it's not going to be done that way today. And that's what I saw you guys intend to do today, and I appreciate that. So that's the crack. Maybe that's the beginning of the steering, you know, wheel or the tiller to turn a big ship around more slowly than we would like. But change starts with dissent and independence, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else which are just council at this time?
So this is probably the last time I'm going to say in front of you. So I'm going to say a couple of things. First, um, Kevin and I, I clearly have a good relationship, and he told me he grew up in Upper Darby and has lead skin, or whatever, I can't remember how he put it. But, um, I, I have to be a little concerned about, I'm a little things, like he was saying about the wall as a presentation, that the weight of the trees, once they're removed, then there will be less stress in the wall. Well, how much are these four luxury units going to weigh? I don't know. I would imagine they're pretty heavy too, so that was kind of a strange comparison. And also, doesn't the, the roots of the trees, don't they hold the soil together? So another thing, so some, some things just started like being pushed through and not thought through. Um, also, a couple of other things, Keaton Green hired, or I don't even think they hired, they asked Michelle Adams, who's a P E, a professional engineer, to also do a stormwater analysis. And she found some errors in the report that they, the developers, and she, oh, by the way, who's still here, the residents. Um, the developers long gone. So we'll be here when, when this development's, well, there, and causing problems too. But, um, he used the same stormwater rate based on what they would be with the, what's there and when the houses are built, which would be, and she said that media residents will bear the burden of the unmanaged runoff. And being someone who is bearing the burden of unmanaged runoff, which I, I read in an article, isn't a borough responsibility. So I'm learning that because after thirteen years, there's water still running through our property and, and hurting our foundation. So I guess we'll just be having to deal with that and have you all too. So, um, I guess that's all. I'm just extremely disappointed in the overall outcome tonight. And, you know, like I said, you don't have to hear me again in front of you, but Amy and Lisa, thank you for. And, oh, one other thing, as far as that in front of the heart, we didn't have to approve a preliminary final. We could have just approved a preliminary and worked things out to show us that we, we met. matter, but it had to be pushed through, so yes, it was pushed through.
It was pushed through.
No, I don't want to get into it with you, I've seen how you treat people, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anybody else wish to address counsel at this time? Mr. Pino, have we received any voice messages or emails since the start of tonight's meeting?
I have nothing.
All of us, team, a motion to adjourn.
Thirty-second executive session, updated on the occasion, a little bit.
A motion to adjourn to executive session. Such a motion. All favor? Aye, aye, as opposed, please say nay. I thought having pleasant and safe to life. And for those of you who have taken a chance, it offers an opportunity for reflection. Good night.